Let me push the button. Good evening. This is the March 1st, 2023 meeting of the Oyster Cooperative School Board. So I would like to start with approval of the agenda tonight, but I'd like to make, just rearrange some of the things at the top here a little bit. Like to start with the approval of the agenda, then do public comment, and then do our, we have three non-public sessions planned for this evening. Like to start with the facility fees, then second superintendent evaluation, and third, the BA process. So that is my, my request for the agenda this evening. Denise?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
We have a motion from Denise, second from Brian. In discussion, all those in favor? Six in favor, so the agenda is approved. And I will point out that Paige is not with us this evening because she is at an away playoff game with the high school girls' basketball team. And Dan is sick tonight and is not with us as well. Is there anybody who would like to speak for public comment this evening? No? All right. Then we will move on to our, our non-public. I will move that we enter a non-public session pursuant to New Hampshire RSA Chapter 91A, Section 3, Subsection 2. Let's see here, I've, I've lost track. Chapter 91A, Section 3, Subsection 2, Paragraph C, matters which are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the school board for discussion of facilities fees. A second from Denise, and this requires a roll call vote.
Heather Smith, yes. UC Tyrell, yes.
Michael Williams, yes?
Denise Day, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
All right, so we'll go into non-public. Pursuant to New Hampshire RSA Chapter 91A, 3, 2, and C, which is matters which if discussed in public would likely affect, adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the public body itself, for discussion of the superintendent's evaluation. A second from Denise, and this requires a roll call vote.
Heather Smith, yes.
UC is mobility impaired and is abstaining. Michael Williams, yes?
Denise Day, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
All right. At 7:20 PM. And for our third non-public, I will move that we enter non-public session pursuant to New Hampshire, Chapter 91A, Section 3, Subparagraph, Paragraph 2, Subparagraph C, matters which if discussed in public are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the school board for purpose of discussing the business administrator selection process. A second from Denise. We have a roll call vote.
Heather Smith, yes.
UC abstains. Michael Williams, yes?
Denise Day, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
All right, so we're back in non-public.
Alex, is it on?
Yes.
All right, we are back at 8:24. To proceed with the rest of the agenda, the next item is, we got everybody back? Yeah. Next item is the approval of the minutes from February 15th.
Actually, we were, we have one thing that you jumped over, so I'm going to interject there because we have something that's the knowledge. Our two board members, UC and Michael, and this is your last meeting. And so UC want to say that you came in in the middle of the pandemic. And I can't even imagine, like, talk about, you know, coming in under fire. And you hit the ground running. And you just dived right in. And your work particularly in terms of communications and the DEIJ. And I know you worked really hard with DEIJ to put some of the events, like the community forum that we had in spring of, I believe it was 2021. Now, it's hard to believe, but just, and, and the outcome of that is that we now have a DEIJ coordinator and a communication specialist. So really want to thank you for your, for your work. And we have a little something for you. For other board members who might want to, because I thought we would do UC first and then we can do Michael. So if any other board members want to speak to UC.
UC, as a new board, as a new board member, you've been a really important part of helping me get used to the procedure and everything. And our walks through the woods have been extremely helpful and very enjoyable. And I just wanted to say thank you for your service, and we're going to miss you.
So now I'm upset that you're taking walks in the woods with other people. Like, I thought it was just me. I thought I was special. I know, right? But particularly when I was thinking about running for the school board and when I did run for the school board, your advice was so helpful. And you have been an amazing board member, dedicated, always prepared, hardworking, and we're going to miss you.
All right, oh, Michael, did you want to?
Well, yeah, so this has been a very challenging couple of years and a very challenging set of circumstances that you stepped into. I think that I particularly will value the, the way that you brought new ideas forward, looked at things in a new lens, and made us think differently than we might have thought otherwise. And I think we all benefit from that. So, thank you.
UC, I can't, I mean, you come in when you came in was such a nightmare for the country. And so I want to thank you for that time period where everything was upside down and sideways, and you continuously pushed us. So thank you very much.
And now, Michael, your ability to plan and focus on details and just keep us moving forward has just really put us on a great path. And particularly your work with the finance committee and the budget. Your PowerPoint for the deliberative session was just absolutely spectacular. And definitely, we need to see those slides in future deliberative sessions because I just felt like they were the clearest I've ever seen. And your work in, in terms of putting the Friday, the information about board news and Friday update, I think has really made a big difference in the community's knowledge of what goes on here. So again, huge thank you to you for all you've done. There's something for you as well. And I will open it up to others to add their comments.
Michael, our walks through the woods have been. As Heather said, when I was thinking about running for and running for school board, your 10,000 answers to my 10,000 questions were invaluable. I'm, I feel better knowing that you're not going to be going away and that we'll be able to be together as friends. And I appreciate your leadership, and just thank you very much.
Hey, push the right button. So it has been, yeah, really great to work with you, particularly on the finance committee. You and Brian both helped me get sort of spun up really quickly. And part of that was trying to figure out all the acronyms coming out of your mouth on any given month's finance committee meeting. But it was really great, the, the depth of your knowledge has been just something that's been really inspiring. And I'm still working towards that level. And I have very much appreciated your leadership and agenda setting as a chair. So thank you.
You have such tremendous strength from the analytical side, whether it's deep in a spreadsheet or thinking through the process, combined with listening to, you know, as a leader, making sure all opinions are, are heard and all voices are heard on the board. And then finally, that third piece, just the, the heart that you bring over all these years to the board. It's, it's really been fun seeing you also grow into, to, into the chair position. And I think that, you know, like, like Matt, I'm just glad that you are in our community.
Michael, I, I do want to say thank you. Two brains couldn't be more different than yours and mine. But we really did build a bridge to each other. And the first few years on the board, I totally didn't understand a word you were saying. And I bought a translator for engineers. And that helped me build the bridge to understand. But I have to say, as chair, so this is my 31st year as superintendent. And you'd think after 31 years, you'd have no place to grow. You have helped me grow in the last three years. I think that I, I learned a lot from, from you in terms of how to balance the effective domain with the ineffective domain. And I think we get to a place where we actually liked each other a lot. And that was kind of nice. And I've really enjoyed, truly enjoyed the time you've been chair. It's been such a growth opportunity for me.
Thank you very much, Denise. Thank you for orchestrating that. And I appreciate very much the collegiality and all the kind words. Did I forget anything else? Okay. And thank you for keeping me on track because, all right. So moving on to the approval of the minutes from February 20, February 15th. Heather?
I move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on February 15th.
A motion from Heather, a second from UC. Any discussion?
Yeah, so we have a small change. I'm trying to figure out, okay, so it's page four at the bottom under Brian's comments during the board self-evaluation. We're going to clip that last sentence that said, or we would like to. He said, "The city can present challenges with issues regarding policy and budget." We, we don't entirely know what that means. No one does. So we're going to change that to get rid of all of it. And it just says, "But he felt overall the board uses procedures and processes that work well and they provide a good level of service."
I think that, I think what Brian said was the state. The state can, does that sound right? The state can present, or we could just strike it. It doesn't, right, right?
Yeah, I asked Brian, and we, between the three of us, none of us had a really strong feeling about what it meant. So we just decided it should just go away.
Okay. All right, with that correction, all those in favor of approval of the February 15th minutes? Six in favor, the minutes are approved. Are there announcements, accommodations, and comments from the district? Not tonight. From the board?
The girls' basketball team lost 61 to 38. But great season, and congratulations to them. I have no word on the boys' score. The boys won at the buzzer. Excellent. Fourteenth seed against the third seed and advancing to the next round. So congratulations.
Thank you, Matt. All right, moving on to district reports then. Assistant Superintendent. Talk about monitoring student growth.
Good evening. This evening, I just wanted to share with you some of the data that we've collected at this point in regards to STAR information. And this, we're focusing on grades two through eight for this presentation. Again, it'll be relatively short because we have two points of data. We don't have data for the high school, for the SAT and PSAT because they have, the kids haven't taken it yet. They won't take that till the end of March. And we also don't have data for, obviously, for the spring, for STAR. But this will just give you an idea of where we are. So again, we're just going to focus on STAR data today. We're going to be looking, just a reminder that the, we look at this as one measure of student growth. It is not the only measure that we utilize, especially in regards to MTSS and systems of supports for kids. We have, again, these are just reminders. There, STAR is administered three times a year. It's administered in the fall, winter, and the spring. Today, we're going to just be looking at the fall and the winter. STAR is a computer adaptive test. So the questions change as the kids continue through the test. They'll get perhaps more challenging, or they may re-ask the same question in a different way to determine where the kids are. The percentile rank in the STAR is a normed reference, and it's normed, it's a national norm. Whereas there is also criterion reference scores that the teachers utilize. So the criteria is based off of the college and career readiness or the Common Core. Those standards are what the criteria are based off of, and the teachers utilize that within, they can utilize that within their classrooms for progress monitoring also, but also just to inform instruction. The criterion reference scores are not something that goes home to families. Those are really for instructional purposes. And then the benchmark that is utilized is the, the 40th percentile benchmark. That is a benchmark that the district sets. So while the percentile rank is norm referenced, the benchmark is a benchmark that the district has set. Does anyone have any questions about those? Okay. So elementary school math proficiency. So when we're talking about proficiency, we're talking about 40th percentile and above. So we have the fall and the winter data here. We are missing some spring data. That is COVID-related and, and has other, there's other reasons why we didn't have that data. And that's, that, you also saw that last year when I did this presentation as well, that there was missing pieces. So as you can see, this year, when the kids came to school in grades two through four in the fall, they were 78% of the, 78% of the kids were working at, at or above proficiency. And then when they retook the STAR assessment in the winter, they were at the 85th percentile. So it looks very similar to previous years.
Suzanne, this is averaging or including all of the second, third, and fourth graders in each year. So this is not following a class?
No, it is not. I have, I do have a slide that does follow a specific class. It was a class that we had talked about last year, which is this year's third grade, last year's second grade. This is a, this is cumulative, yes. And the reading proficiency, again, it's following some of the same trends that we've seen in the past for elementary school. I would say, you know, if I, if we look at sort of where we were in 2018, 2019, the scores are kind of, are pushing up, which is, which is good to see also. Even 1920, the scores are being pushed up a little bit for us. Percent proficient. So this is, this is the, the class of 2032, which is this year's third grade, last year's second grade. And so last year, if you recall, I brought some data to you that showed that class where they were with proficiency. And I brought that data back. And so I've changed the format in which you see the information. And so the green now shows you the at or above proficiency, the number, that is a number of kids within that group that are at or above proficient. And then you have, you can see how the, the reason why I chose this is so that you can see how the number of kids that are in the 25th percentile and below, it is shrinking, it expands and shrinks a little. But as it expands and shrinks, you can see the same thing happening with the kids that are between the 40th and 26th. And then you can see the green, the number of kids that are becoming proficient as growing as those. So, so I wanted to show that growth so that you could see that growth. And that's why I chose this visual for that effect. And this is for reading. So what, so this is, this is good news because it means that the kids are receiving the, the different interventions that they need in order to become at that at or above proficient mark. And then we see this with ma, I mean, with reading as well. Whoops, I went back. There's math. We see this with math. So again, you can see in the fall of '21, for math, you can see where the kids were. And now you can see in the fall of 2022, that has shifted. So, so the number of kids that are below the 25th percentile has gotten smaller, while the number of kids in that, between the 40th and 25th percentile has gotten a little bit bigger. But then the number at the at or above has gotten even, even larger. So you can start to see that sort of growth and the shift.
Suzanne, can I interrupt you for a second? So I really love these. And one of the things that I think, when we looked at this data last time that we were talking about particularly for the math is that the green kind of stalled. So we weren't really pushing people at or above, but we were shifting the people between the 25th and the, and the 40th percentiles. And you saw that for 20, fall '21, winter, and spring of '22. And then this year, however, that green is actually moving downwards in this picture. But that means more, more kiddos are becoming at or proficient. And the size of the yellow is decreasing. So we're actually starting to shift people into the different categories. And I really like this visual representation. I really also think it's really positive. Similarly, you see it with reading, but in math, it's particularly striking. The, I think the MTSS system and identifying and identifying those interventions, we're, we're starting to get good at it, it looks like.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, I think that's really powerful and really exciting.
So this is, this is just the third grade, this year's third grade. I've only, I've only done it for one group of kids.
As I recall, the, so I love this too. Thank you so much for breaking it out this way. What I was responding to Heather is, I, as I recalled, the previous ones were looking at years that were further apart.
Yeah.
So you know, like, what the second grade was doing, what the fifth grade was doing, what eighth grade, or something like that. So this is only two, you know, three years of.
Yeah. This is only, I only polled for the last two years since we've been back, since the pandemic, this group. But we wouldn't have data for this group of students because they don't start taking the STAR until their second grade anyways. So we wouldn't have STAR data for this particular group of students. So middle school, we're seeing the same thing. You know, we're, we're in the same place that we, you know, similar places that we've been in the past. Again, if you look at 2018, 2019, I think you see a little bit more growth there for us in comparison to today for percent proficient. But we're in a really good place. Our kids are in a wonderful place. And then the reading scores, the middle school reading scores. You can see the growth again from, you know, 2018, 2019, and then where we are today, and it's increasing. We can ask the question, you know, you could ask the question of, hopefully, that projection is going to increase. Last year, it stabilized all year for, for reading. So it'll be interesting to see. We've implemented a different progress monitoring tool. This year, with, we invested in some training for, for faculty around it, around the reading, around acadians, and some progress monitoring with that over the summer and throughout the school year. So, so hopefully, we'll see some improvements in that area too for students as well. Yeah.
I also, you made a point to me when I had asked you some of these questions earlier. Last year in particular, we asked a lot of the middle school students, like, hey, how about you start the year in one building? And then how about we move you while we're tearing down the old building? And it's just a lot of transitions and a lot of anxiety that the kiddos had just in terms of their environment last year. And so holding steady in the case of reading and slight gains in math is, is still a pretty good thing, I think.
Yeah, I saw a message that Jay sent to his staff this week that said, "Last year at this time, we were, we had just moved into the new building." So it's, it's, it's hard to think about that, but they've been in the new building for a year. They just went through that process. So it's, sometimes we forget about that. Yeah. So really, what we want to do is continue with our multi-tiered systems of supports. Like I said, we have some new pieces to that. We've invested in some progress, acadians at that middle school level. There's some other work that we would like to do. So we're reassembling the district MTSS team, which is something that we haven't done since pre-pandemic. And so we need to get the group back together again, look at the strategic plan, look at where we are, and make sure as a district, we're consistent with our MTSS work. And so we're, we're in the process of doing that. We would, we continue to work with students on sustaining focus and working on executive functioning skills and those pieces. Individualized interventions continue. Foundations is something that we utilize heavily in the K1, 2 for a literacy program. And so we've implemented that at the third grade level in, in varying intensity depending on needs of students. And so we continue to do that this year. And then we are currently preparing for the implementation of Eureka Squared, which is, which is the Eureka Math Program. It's just sort of an updated version. And part of that, there's an element of it that allows us to progress monitor students in math. And so we're really excited to look at that and to dive a little more deeply into that because that's one of the areas that teachers have been talking about is it would be great to have a progress monitoring tool for kids for mathematics that is, that is universally used K through 5. So we're going to be looking at that. So we're going to be looking at that also with the Eureka Squared program. So we're really excited about that, and we're doing that work right now. And then for middle school kids, just continuing to use that Bobcat and the flexible time to be able to service the needs that they have and to be able to give them any sort of interventions that are necessary and supports. If anyone has any questions.
What is actually shared with students about their own STAR assessments?
So they, the STAR assessments are, what's shared with them is what's on the family report. That would be what, what the parent sees. That's the information. The, my experience with faculty has been that they don't focus too much on that with the kids. But if they're, but they do talk to, they do talk to them about it because it is part of what is reported home. Yeah.
I really loved that slide that is following a cohort. And I wonder if the, if the analysis isn't too hard. It seems like that would be a fantastic new reporting format for the board going forward across different classes. I also know that sometimes we talk about more advanced students and making sure that they also have ways to improve in the district. And so just, I won't be here, but as a, as a question, would it make sense to also set a cutoff at seventy-five, for example, and see how many in the below seventy-five over the course of their, their time at Oyster River get above seventy-five?
Yeah, so we do, we have, there is another point, there is another point of data that we can pull that would be, that, we group at or above together, but is it possible to pull it apart? We could look at that and see if there's another point of data to pull that even apart. We'd have to figure out where, what that would be, what that percentage would be. I don't know if there's a, I can look at, I do have some pa, I do have last year's data. So I could, I could pull another class and do the same thing and follow them. You know, whether it's last year's fifth grade, maybe another transition year for kids. So I could pull another class and, and look at that if people are interested in me doing the same thing for the, that I've done for the third grade.
I think you addressed this, but I didn't quite catch it. When we're looking at fall, winter, spring, if a student did exactly the same, answered the exact same question the exact same way in the fall and then the winter, would they get the same percentage? Or is, is the bar going up even over the course of the year?
Yeah, there's growth that it's, that is expected or anticipated as the year progresses.
Okay.
Benchmark increases.
Yeah.
The benchmark increases, yeah.
That's why I wondered about twenty-one, twenty-two, whether our students were actually improving the way they normally do, but other districts were so far behind from COVID that as they went up the learning curve a little bit faster in catching up, we stayed relatively the same instead of having the normal increase.
Right. Yeah. Well, and it also, it also, granted, looking again at twenty-one, twenty-two, going from seventy-six down to seventy-five, down to seventy-four doesn't seem like a big amount. It's a small percentage, but it is a, you know, downward trend. But if you're not, if it's not against the same benchmark, then it doesn't mean the same thing.
Right. Great, thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. All right. Dr. Moore, superintendent's report.
A long one tonight, but I decided not to, Michael. I'm done.
That was fast. All right. Business administrator? No? We do not have a student representative report tonight. We don't have a finance committee report tonight. That moves us to unanimous consent. Are there any of these policies that anybody would like to discuss separately? If not, then I will move that we approve the unanimous consent agenda, which is for second read and adoption, policy BIB and BIBR, Board Members Development Opportunities and the Procedure, EG, District Communication Plan, and IHBG Home Education. Have a second from UC, from Denise? All those in favor? Six in favor, the unanimous consent agenda is approved. All right. We don't have any discussion and action items on here. Is there anything else that?
I think we missed one.
Did we?
EGR.
Oh. EGR. It wasn't on the agenda. Let's see.
We had this, it, if, we had this in the agenda the, the last time for first read. We missed EGR.
It is in the packet.
Yeah, but it is in the packet.
All right. So, so this is a procedure, is this a procedure that we would expect? So some procedures, procedures that are controlled by the board, the board typically approves. Procedures that are more administrative in nature are not typically approved by the board in all cases. Is this one that falls into that second category?
All I know is at the top, it says, School Board Second Read, March first. So.
That is true. This is on page five of the policy packet.
Based on our discussion in our last policy meeting, this wouldn't, like Jim just said, I'd just be repeating.
None. All right. So, so there will be no School Board Second Read Adoption header on there, and we will not take action on it. Are there other discussion or action items that we overlooked tonight? Or committee updates?
Sustainability is meeting tomorrow.
All right. Anybody for public comment this evening? Our future meetings, the, the next meeting that's shown on here is March twenty-second and then April fifth. But before that even is the election, local election on March fourteenth. So I encourage everybody to go out and vote. It's a relatively simple ballot on the school side. I think there are some, some town things going on this year as well.
Add, would returning board members please pencil in March twentieth as a meeting? We'll confirm that. Yeah.
Seven AM, no. Right. Right, so future meeting dates. We don't have any more non-public, we've taken care of that. So thank you for, for indulging me and letting me put some closing remarks at the end of the, at the end of the meeting tonight. When I shared in January that I would not be seeking reelection, I didn't talk about why. School Board service is, is and has been very interesting for me. It's rewarding in many ways. It's very, I think it's necessary for our community. And my decision simply came down to time, that every part of this role requires additional time. And I, I don't know that I have given the time that this role really needed over the last year. And then there's that additional investment of mental energy. Besides the time in meetings, preparing for meetings, responding to community input, sometimes you're just preoccupied with what you were thinking about, about the school board when you're not even here. So, so that, that's, that's really the motivation behind my decision. There's a lot of people that I would like to thank, so buckle up. No. I, I, I really could not even scratch the surface in the few minutes that we have here. But first and foremost, I want to thank my family, my wife Laura, and the kids, Karina and Jillian and Ike. They have put up with me basically not being around on Wednesdays for the last six years and lots of other times when I'm, my, my head is in a different place. And they've been extremely supportive, and I'm looking forward to having that time back with them on Wednesday evenings. Our community input ebbs and flows, and it really does not always feel good. But I really do appreciate every email from parents and community members, and especially students that we get. I know that even those who staunchly disagree with me or with us really do have the best interests of their kids, our kids, our schools, and our community at heart. And that's been a real, real gift here in, in Oyster River. That input is really important, and the best way to ensure that most of the board sees it is by email, in my opinion. So I'll just kick that one in there one more time, not posting it on a Facebook group. The, the job here can feel lonely, and the occasional community note of just simple support or confidence that somebody took the time to write is really meaningful, and that encouragement does help keep me going. So thank you to the folks that took the time to do that over the last several years. Dr. Morse, and Suzanne, and to the other department heads, you've always been very generous with your time and patient with my questions. This has been true across the board in every area, but I want to particularly thank Sue Caswell. I've always had a need to understand the mechanics of the budget at a very detailed level. And you have answered all of my questions very patiently, most of them several times over the course of the last several years when I need to ask the same question again. Superintendent Morrison, Assistant Superintendent Philippone, we really have an outstanding leadership team overall. And with the kind of passion and experience and dedication that you and our department directors and principals demonstrate, it really makes the board's job much, much easier. So thank you, and thanks to the entire leadership team. There is no way to properly thank every one of the people who work in the Oyster River schools and serve the students and our community every day. The school district works because of your commitment to every aspect of the school experience. Because students learn best when they also have excellent academic and arts support, including libraries, tutors, special education teachers, paraeducators, specialists, options for all kinds of academic, social, and athletic extracurriculars, buildings and fields that are expertly taken care of inside and out, and work for the students every day, consistent and safe transportation, access to the best public school breakfast and lunch program I know of anywhere, IT infrastructure that is evolved with technology and needs, dedication to students' social, emotional wellbeing, health resources when they're needed, and those who direct traffic, both literally and metaphorically in our school offices, where it is amazing chaos every day, and somehow everything gets done. So thank you. And to the board, I learn from you every meeting, every, every time that we, we share our opinions, share our perspectives on things. I thank you for your confidence in me as chair and your support over the last two years. We've done things, in some cases, a little bit differently. I appreciate your commitment and your collegiality as well as your service to our community. Please keep up the good fight. We have a lot to be proud of when we look back over the last few years. All of our school buildings have been, have, have seen safety and efficiency improvements. Addressing one challenge at the middle school in terms of technology use, by moving to the one-to-one laptop program turned out to be a fortuitous and essential tool when COVID arrived, even though more access to computers does bring its own challenges and downsides as well. When I look back, I think our budgets have been responsible. We have made mutually beneficial improvements in our collective bargaining agreements and benefits offerings for staff. We've been able to have all students and staff back in buildings for the fall of twenty twenty-one, even though maybe we didn't move as quickly as we would have liked in some cases. Getting back was a high priority for us at that point. We have incrementally expanded academic offerings and support at all levels, sometimes with additional teachers, but more often with additional services and support such as paraeducators, subject area specialists, and tutors. I think that out-of-the-box thinking has been really good for, for everybody and makes both good use of, of taxpayer resources as well as providing targeted support where it's best needed. We added positions like Rachel's as DEIJ Coordinator and Jen's as Communication Specialist, and those will continue to support students and staff alike, and ultimately build even better connections between the school and the community outside. We've attempted to support staff and to a certain degree, insulate them from political silliness in Concord or Washington. And while we still have room to grow, I think we've improved our board workflow and governance practices here. And of course, we opened this building over the last few years as well. So because this is me, this wasn't just going to be recognition and patting ourselves on the back and writing off into the sunset. There was a time, a couple of years ago, where I was so frustrated with how things were going in the district from my kids' perspective, from our family's perspective, that I got to a point where I felt like the best thing I should do was to resign from this role so that I could focus on advocating for my kids. And Dr. Morse talked me out of that and, and helped me, helped me, you know, figure out a way to chart a course there. There are, there are, there are votes that I would make differently if I was going to do them again. There are, we were not united during the first year of COVID, and there are several things I would do differently around that if we ever had to do over, which I, I hope we never do. I think we recognize this, but, but sometimes it is easy to, to forget that this is not, this is not like Wobegon. We are not in a bubble. We're not immune to the challenges that face all schools around the country. There are a few things that I want to toss out as, as, you know, things that if I was going to be here longer, would be things I would be watching out for in the future. I don't think our strategic plan is what it could be. And the next time that we are doing a strategic plan, I would encourage the board to take a more ownership of that process and make sure that the strategic plan really reflects the board's vision and prioritization about what is practical and what we really want to achieve in the, in the five years ahead. Our communication district-wide, I think, is improving. I think that getting to the point of having a communications specialist was a, was a huge milestone for us, and I would love to see that continue. I think that classroom to home, building to home, superintendent to home, superintendent to community has improved dramatically. I'm really excited that we're working on an overhaul of the website. That's going to be a huge thing for making information easier to find. I think that there is still opportunity for the board in particular in terms of how does the board want to communicate with the community and use our, our new resources and what the board wants to share going forward. Fundamentally, I, I really appreciate what, what Assistant Superintendent Philippone shared this evening and the way that we looked at, like, like UC pointed out, following a single class through and looking at improvement in a class over time. That, to me, is much more powerful than saying, hey, look, look, look how far, look at the gap between Oyster River students and the state average. Our goal is not to be average. Our goal is not to stay the same. The biggest risk here for the district overall is complacency. And it's everybody's job to keep us moving forward and keep improving and keep stretching. We cannot be okay with things just being fine here. So I've said it many times over the last six years. The mission statement of working together to engage every learner is really an audacious, audacious mission at, at one level. Every learner in a, in a district of over two thousand students is, that's, that's, that's a lot of kids, and it's a lot of unique relationships. But it's also the right idea to identify where we are doing that and where we need to adapt. So I think we're on the right path in most places. So thank you for your support. Thank you for where we're headed. And I would like to, I would like to charge Dr. Morse with, this is, no, I don't think you have that, that responsibility. This is, this is the copy of Robert's Rules of Order that Tom Newkirk passed to me a couple of years ago. I'm going to hand this to you, Dr. Morse, and charge you with making sure that the next chair has that at their fingertips. It's not a good read. It doesn't actually answer the questions that you need answered. But, but, you know, you'll have it when, if, when and if you need it. I think that's more for the board to have to deal with than you for once. So. All right. So, so let's go. Be brave, be bold, be Bobcat. And with that, one last time, I will move that we adjourn. You have a second from Heather? All in favor? Six in favor. We're adjourned.